Good evening. Today is October 25, 2022. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I see that we do have a quorum. I'll ask Mr. Councilman Carolina to lead us into the invocation, or give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we're here this day asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our communities. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, the environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in service to humanity in Georgetown County, South Carolina, and humanity worldwide. Our prayers are for peace and brotherhood in America. Our prayer is for peace and brotherhood worldwide, and we ask of all these things in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. There's a... We're moving down to the approval of the agenda. There's a recommendation to move items 11A and 11B forward on the agenda.
Remove.
Remove by Councilman Newton to move items 11A, 11B forward. Is there a second? We first discuss items 11A and 11B. Those particular items pertain to ordinance number 22-27 and ordinance number 22-28 regarding amendment to future land use map 48, 2,061 acre parcel located on St. Delight Road, further identified as TMS number 1-0442-026-07-00, from low-density residential to public semi-public, and then ordinance number 22-28 to rezone an approximately 2,061.4 acre tract located off of St. Delight Road, identified as TMS number 01-0442-026-07-00, to add a solar energy facility floating district to the current zone for agricultural tract. There have been a lot of conversation regarding this particular project, and also there have been some concerns regarding the decommissioning process from the developers there. With that being said, we are looking at asking our county administrator to dwell deeper and chew the decommissioning process of that particular facility prior to our making a decision. And with that being said, is there a motion to defer that those... Well, let's take it one at a time. Is there a motion to defer ordinance number 22-27?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As this project is located in District 3 and specifically the Lambert Town community, I make a motion of deferment regarding this second reading that we receive additional and clear information on this project. The citizens have come forth and passed meetings to express their concerns. Please make a request of the administrator, as stated, to contact further parties and entities to get information concerning this project.
So there's a motion for deferment from Councilman Carolina. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now, we'll go down to ordinance number 22-28. Is there a motion to defer?
Regarding that motion again, sir, I make a motion to defer action until we get additional information.
Motion by Councilman Carolina to defer ordinance number 22-28. Is there a second?
I'll second once again.
Seconded by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Ordinance number 22-27 and ordinance number 22-28 has been deferred to gain additional information regarding decommissioning. Thank you, Madam Administrator. We move down to special reports. We'll hear from our Director of Emergency Services, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, Councilman, or Chairman Morant, members of council. Here's tonight upon request from Madam Administrator to give you guys an update again, once again, on Hurricane Ian. Our recovery efforts continue. We've been in close coordination with our partners at State Emergency Management Division, as well as Federal Emergency Management Agency. I am seeking both our individual assistance declaration and the Small Business Administration declaration to help support those residents that were impacted by the storm. Following our joint preliminary damage assessments on October 14 regarding those two categories, we are still awaiting determinations from those federal agencies regarding what assistance may become available to our residents who were impacted. But in the meantime, our voluntary organizations throughout the county, our voluntary organizations active in disaster, also known as our VOAD, they've been very, very helpful in addressing those unmet needs that any residents may have. In addition to our assistance efforts to gain that federal support for the residents, we've also been working with our state and federal partners to secure a disaster declaration. On the public assistance side, we too still continue to wait for a determination from both the state and the federal government on that process. As you know from past experience, there's a declaration request process. In close consultation with the state earlier today, we expect them to request that federal major disaster declaration from the federal government later this week, by the end of the week. To date, we've submitted over $4 million in eligible damages and costs for the county from a public assistance perspective.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ellis, could you repeat those numbers again?
It's over $4 million, a little over $4 million in cost and damages associated with the storm. That's just for the county itself. We also have the cumulative totals for all of our eligible applicants, which is a long list throughout the county, which exceeds $6 million. Working towards that threshold of just over, almost $9.1 million that the state needs. So we feel very optimistic that we'll meet that threshold. We have been awarded, pre-storm, the emergency protective measures declaration. So we're working through that for our emergency protective measures that were taken. But the bulk of our damages did result in permanent damage that don't qualify under the emergency protective measures piece of that program. Like I said, they hope to submit that to the feds by the end of the week, and we'll be kind of in a waiting pattern for FEMA to make a determination. Once they make a determination, we'll make sure that we report back, and we'll begin that process of the public assistance program. So subject to any questions you all might have.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
First, what's going to be the share line on that? I can't recall.
Seventy-five, twenty-five percent unless granted otherwise by the federal.
Okay, so we'll be recouping seventy-five percent?
Yes, sir. Historically, we've done a little bit better than that with some help from the state legislator. But we can't hang our hat on that until they make a determination on the actual disaster declaration.
And what's the period before we are reimbursed?
That's a good question.
That's why I asked.
It's not very quickly, as you know. We still have several outstanding projects from previous disasters. We're still working some Hurricane Matthew stuff, matter of fact, from 2016. So it's a slow process, but we're working towards securing whatever funding we can get.
Are we going to charge them interest on that time?
I wish we could. I'll defer that to the administrator, and we'll send them a bill.
Would, if we're fortunate enough to get any federal money, would that, some of that apply to beach restoration?
Yes, sir, on the eligible beaches. Obviously, we only have a small portion of the beach that we're responsible for in Georgetown County. The rest are maintained by either municipalities, private communities, or the Army Corps of Engineers. But all of those entities will be engaged in that process. But there is a small portion of that that would be eligible for assistance in reclaiming that sand and putting it back where it belongs.
Director Ellis, was most of that, majority of that requested on the Walk 'em All Neck area, or was anything west of the Wardway?
Yes, sir. All of the damages that were public assistance damages were, so far, have been identified on the Walk 'em All Neck, with the exception of some things that county building-wise are covered under our insurance. But other than that, the vast majority of it has been Garden City, Litchfield, Polys Island communities. Any other questions?
Any other questions from council? For Ms. Ellis? Thank you, appreciate it. You and your team have done a tremendous job assessing all the damages for Georgetown County. We really appreciate that.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you to everyone. Team Georgetown still going strong, so thank you.
We move down to nonprofit spotlight, the Joy School. We'll hear from the program director.
Good evening, Councilman Morant and all the council members. My name is Martha Insignis. I am the program director of the Joy School and have just celebrated 30 summers of being the program director. The Joy School is a mission of the Polys Island Presbyterian Church. The picture you're looking at right there is most of the staff that have, many of them have worked with me for many years. They also work in the public school here, whether they're special ed teachers, or assistants in class, or bus drivers, or some are college students who are studying to be special ed teachers or health-related careers. So pretty much Joy School is a six-week summer program for children who have disabilities. If you all, oh, in Hyatt, all my neighbors in France, people of Georgetown County who are here. If you can think about when you were a child and you couldn't wait for summertime, and you were thinking about all the fun things you were going to do in the summertime, just think about that for a minute. You remember, you have those feelings. We all have those feelings. You thought, oh, I'm going to go swimming, I'm going to meet my friends, maybe I'm going to go on the boat, we're going to go to the beach, I'm going to summer camp. You had so many fun things that you were going to do all summer long, and that's what Gail Hulsby wanted for her daughters. She had two daughters, and that's why she started this program at the Presbyterian Church with her husband, the pastor at that time. And they wanted their daughters, who had severe disabilities, to also have something wonderful to do in the summertime when they got out of public school and then didn't start again until the fall. So that's how it got started, by a mom. A mom who just wanted something better for her children. So 40 years now, Polys Island Presbyterian has been the home for Joy School. But what does that mean for Georgetown County? The kids who attend Joy School come from all over the county. We average about 50 to 60 students. These are children ages six to into the young twenties, and then they come every day, Monday through Friday, nine to two. We have classes in music, PE, academics, drama, swimming, arts and crafts. We use a ton of volunteers from all over Georgetown County. And you may be from one of the churches that provided us a delicious lunch. I always look forward to Bethel because there's somebody there who makes the most delicious yeast rolls. And other churches or businesses in the Georgetown community who have donated t-shirts or paper towels, arts and craft supplies, almost everything you could think of that you would need to run a summer program. So yes, Polys Island Presbyterian is the place we meet, but it's all of Georgetown County and children from all over Georgetown County who make this program, the Joy School. So I'm happy to take any questions. We usually go on field trips, like up into Myrtle Beach. One of our biggest challenges, of course, was COVID, but then now it's like traffic. So we, with all the growth in Highway 17 in the summertime, like we even going to Huntington Beach State Park is kind of difficult now. And so this last summer, we brought people into Joy School. The Polys Island Community Band came and played for us there. There was a ballet group that came and did a performance and danced with us at Joy School. And we had therapy dogs that came in and let the kids all pet them and interact with them. And some local artists who would come and help the children do some really great painting. So I kind of flipped it. Instead of us going out, we had people come to us, and it was really kind of nice. I wasn't as stressed at all this summer. I thought, you know, the buses and everything. But really great staff. I couldn't do Joy School without so many of these staff members who have been with me for 20 years or more, really great people. I love Georgetown County. I know this room is full of people who must really love Georgetown County too, and I love that we have this. You can travel other parts of South Carolina, and you will find a summer program that's free for the children to attend. And these are some kids who need help in the bathroom. They need help feeding themselves. They need help walking, talking, just all their daily needs. So it's no cost to the parents for them to come. The parents just have to get them there and pick them up. And then what a great summer for these kids not to be home, isolated, just, or even for the parents too, to have a little respite where they know their child's in a safe place, a place where we love them and want them to be with us all day. So that's what we've really tried to keep the mission going at Polys Island Presbyterian, and we've done it because of all the support of so many organizations in Georgetown County. Financially, the Bunell Foundation, Knights of Columbus, many of the area churches do gifts in kind and send us donations too, and we're just really grateful. I'm just really grateful that Joy School is in, at Polys Island Presbyterian and in Georgetown County, because I feel like we love one another. We take care of one another. So it's a good place. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've been doing this so long, I sometimes forget to mention something.
Martha, I have one question. Is this the location that you hear a lot of locals refer to as Baskerville?
No, Baskerville's a little further north.
So a little further from where you're talking?
Right, right, at Polys Island Presbyterian. And years ago, we used to swim at the Baskerville pool.
Yeah, that was an Episcopal fire...
Yes, that is, it's Holy Cross, Holy Cross. Now we swim and teach my people on Fridays, which is another nonprofit that's doing amazing things in Georgetown County for our kids. So one thing that has come off, again, with the growth in Georgetown County, that we have, and by doing this for so many years, I know a lot of adults now who are over 21, they're not in public school anymore. They might be on a waiting list to get into our Board of Disabilities and Special Needs Program, or they're just at home with their family members because there's not a lot of options for them. So the Presbyterian Church said yes to me again when I decided to stop working full-time for the school district in 2012 and start a program called Joy School University. So now, year-round, two days a week, we have a program at Polys Island Presbyterian that's called Joy School University for those over 21, and there's about 25 students that attend that every Monday and Tuesday. So that's a really great, they're a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate being here tonight.
We'd like to again thank the Joy School for the services you provide for the citizens of Georgetown County. Thank you again. We move down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda. It shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his/her a lot of chime to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. At the conclusion of your three-minute time period at whatever time is allotted this evening, a buzzer will go off, and we ask that you promptly conclude your comments at that particular sounding. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have 15 speakers signed up tonight. So each will have up to two minutes to stay within our 30-minute allotted time period. The first will be Mr. Dan Stacy.
Good evening, Mr. Morant, and other members of council. I am here tonight on agenda items 11C and 11D, and will be glad to answer questions when you get to that section, should you have them. But pointing out a couple of things, this is a project that is slated to be 90 townhouses, all rental units. We have made a commitment in keeping with the county's study of a dire shortage of alternate forms of housing and more affordable housing to agree to make 30% of these units less than market rate for a period of up to 15 years. And would ask that if this council believes this is an appropriate thing, that we would be authorized to work with your administrator and your county attorney and your planning director to facilitate the appropriate development agreement to ensure our obligations to do so. The staff report on this issue is very thorough and very accurate. A couple of things probably bear pointing out. What's its own for that site now is 167,700 square feet of commercial use. The proposed use will take it down to 146,000 square feet, which is a reduction in density. The proposed use would be 2,448 trips a day, the proposed existing use. Our proposed change would take it down to 604 trips per day. We certainly would comply with every other facet of Georgetown County, stormwater, tree ordinance, all the rest. There is a commercial piece, a dog park, and a general amenity area. We will save all the grand trees that are shown on this site. But the main thing here is that this will provide 27 units to this community that will be less than fair market value for a lengthy period of time to attempt to alleviate or partially alleviate the housing crisis identified by your consultant. Keep in mind too, that this project, over 30 years of its existence, would generate in excess of $16 million worth of revenue for property taxes alone, and that present value of about 10.1. But this is a project that will pay for itself and alleviate some of the county's other budget constraints, as well as dealing with the shortage of... budget constraints, as well as dealing with the shortage of workforce housing. I'm glad to answer questions when you get to the agenda items. We'll be sitting in the front row. Thank you.
Thurman Cameron.
To the chairperson, Mr. Moran, to many others. Um, our problem with our roads being cut, side of roads being cut, our grass grows up to hit sides, almost up to our door handles. I live in the PD community, something called Rice Town. Hicks Hills Drive don't be cut, Ferrer Drive don't be cut, Elyse Drive, neither Hicks Road, neither Corn Drive. Now, part of Hicks Drive, half of it belongs to the state, and other belongs to the county. They come for a Thurman Drive, then they go away. I mean, what's our problem? We can't get our road cut. I have talked with Mr. Lanny, Mr. Davis used to be there with the county. I have talked with Mr. Lanny, I think there's a Mr. Mooch in there now. Every time our car, they say they need quickly be broken down. I mean, we taxpaying people, we do contribute money to the county to have our work done and live decent. I take my own personal motor, come from Hicks Drive and go north about a quarter of mile to keep our road cut. I shouldn't have to do that. So I'm just asking, is there any way that y'all can maintain our roads more better? If y'all wanna pay me, buy me a tract down in Alaba, I'll be glad to cut the orange thing. My personal motor, that's after me. I do want a decent place to live. I may be family cut, but I don't live in the woods. So it is a problem.
You don't wanna say anything? Sir, we, we hear you, we appreciate it, and we will address that issue.
Really, they don't cut it but one time a year, they need cutting again. I mean, nobody don't wanna drive through a field, I'm in the grass, I'll tell you, no handles.
The message will be delivered to our public service director, sir.
When I get any feedback?
Mr. Cameron, I will talk with you subsequent to the meeting, and get the madam clerked and get some report back to you, in the PD community.
Yes, sir. And my new solar panels, and that's the problem, people don't want that on their property either.
I turned the timer off.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Michael T. Green.
Good morning, good afternoon, to you all. Parkersville Road and Pettigrew. The last meeting, I spoke about it. There's just too much traffic coming from Pettigrew to Parkersville. Parkersville, it's a thirty mile an hour speed limit, and they run eighty miles an hour on it. Now, to put these high-density condominiums on six point seven acres, it's just madness. The property is flood zone, retention ponds, we don't need that. It's constantly destroying Parkersville. We just can't have that in our neighborhood. Not at all. We don't want it. We voted against it. The traffic, where are the people gonna go? They're gonna, they're gonna have to try to get through Coachman, Martin Luther, Parkersville. It's just not gonna happen. You have to look at it for what it is. It's just not going to work. Thank you.
Sandra Inman.
Hello, I'm Sandra Inman. I am a transplant from California. I've been here for about four years, and I was a real estate agent for twenty-two. And I'm a little baffled, while we're here tonight even discussing this, when we've come before and it was denied. And I came to Polley's Island because of the quaintness, and I really don't understand, you put ninety units here, then behind everybody's back that came here for the other meetings, and we said no, then you, the council, approved over in Parkersville and somewhere else. Why are you, kinda like, I don't know what else to say, I feel like a little kid, picking on this little area? Why don't you build, coming down from Polley's to Georgetown, there's plenty of places there, or by Deppidoo, you know? I mean, encroach somebody else. We're a little teeny community there, and it's gonna be dangerous. There's no sidewalks, there's potholes, your car, my car has suffered just driving around. Investors are gonna build, they don't have to do the roads, and it's ridiculous. And I'm sure some of you have been to Pebble Beach, where I lived, in Pacific Grove, and just when we had a golfing tournament, it was like a hurricane is here. You couldn't, you can't move. Your car goes two inches because of all the influx of people. So imagine a hurricane here, and three hundred and sixty more cars congested in that little area. Trying to get out on Highway seventeen is a disaster. It's a real disaster. And I think you guys are very intelligent, you're really smart, and you should use all of that to hear we, the people, and that you're gonna cause a lot of danger to a lot of people if you don't stop.
Norman Reed.
To the Georgetown County Board, my name is Norman Reed. I'm a resident of the Parkersville Community of Polley's Island. I live within a block. I voted yes to build more than forty-five units of family townhouses development, located east of Pettigrew, between Pettigrew and Parkersville. Although planning voted no and objected to the proposal, county council override planning objection and voted yes. Now, there are two county councils that live in our vicinity of the Polley's Island. One voted yes to build a townhouse, and the other voted no. Now, the one that voted yes to build a townhouse, that just covered, covered that vicinity no longer, is running for reelection. Now, that put a question mark to me, why? The other voted yes. Now, although planning has voted no, county council override planning again and voted yes to build it, I ask the member of county council to come to Parkersville, visit Parkersville in that area, and look for yourself. Because planning offered you not, not to do this. Look for yourself and see if this is the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Mary Black.
My name's Mary Black, and I live in, I live in Parkersville. And this is the third development you're asking us to, to approve. Now, the thing is, we already had two that we said no, and Councilman Steve Goggins, you jumped on that build-it train. I, in my opinion, it's misguided, and because you're now a lame duck, we're just, I'm asking that you people please, don't, don't approve this third high-density development within two miles of each other. That's the third one, without infrastructure, sidewalks, good roads, and even our schools are gonna be overcrowded. I just want you to use proper restraint. Now, Bob Henderson, you were the lone voice of reason, and you said it's too crowded. But now you're still going with quantity over quality. That's not the American dream. Thank you.
Nicole Valentine.
Hi, I'm here to speak on behalf of the people in the community of Lambert Town who are for the solar panels, because we do not wanna be here standing up, having to say what these people have just said before. Please don't bring another development to our community. The solar panel farm, to you folks in Lambert Town that are not for it, this is your best chance of keeping Lambert Town what it's always been, a quiet community where we all know each other. You all know all of your neighbors. If development comes, and if this solar panel farm does not come, it will be development. Look at what you're already listening to tonight, look at Myrtle Beach, look at Somerville, look at Mount Pleasant. It will be developed, I'm telling you, development is coming whether you like it or not. Solar panels will be quiet, you won't see them with the two hundred buffer, foot buffer that comes around them, and there won't be two thousand people. If the, if, the only entities that have the means to purchase this property are large tract home developers. They will develop it, and they will get it rezoned. And it might not be by the folks sitting up here today, but let me tell you, these people have the resources to stack the council, and they will get the votes, and they won't care about what their constituents say. And you will have not one house per acre, you will have six houses per acre, and you will have apartments. So please, don't fight the solar panel. It's the best chance you have of keeping your quiet, your little Lambert Town community, which I've been visiting since my birth fifty years ago, to keep it what it has always been, which is a quiet community where everyone knows everyone and everyone cares about everyone. Don't be what these folks who've just had to stand up here and beg cancel. Please don't develop. And council members, I don't see where you have a choice. You have a failing power plant. To vote for the greater good, which is your job for this community, is to keep them electricity. I do believe I speak for everyone when I say you enjoy your air conditioning.
William Cooper.
Good evening, this is regarding the proposed development in Parkersville. Simply put, my wife and I are concerned and oppose developments such as these that do not comply with the master plan and do not complement the existing nature and needs of our community. The lot in question is not zoned for residential and is surrounded by light industry and wetlands populated, wetlands populated by wildlife. There is a reason for its current zoning, and there is no reason to alter it now. The idea that the proposed changes will allow high density in an area that is nearly rural in places is ridiculous. The planning mission, the planning commission made the right call in voting to deny the application. We urge you to uphold this correct decision.
Vincent Davis.
Good evening, council. Chairman Moran and other city members of the board. My name is Vincent Davis, and I'm the president of the Polley's Island Civic Club. Our agenda is stated as followed. September the twenty-seventh, the civic club came to continue to make awareness of a master water drainage plan. Three days after that, we had Hurricane Anne, who gave us more facts that this discussion needs to move up the ladder of importance. Now, the civic club, we know that we need homes, and we know that there're gonna be developments. We're asking for them to be fair and safe for the citizens of our community. Now, we have three developments that have been approved by council that's coming to our community. Not one development for workforce housing, police officers, teachers, restaurant workers. So we want it to be safe. We have concerns that we are looking to build future developments on old infrastructure. Anne has proven that we need to work on our infrastructure. And the civic club is willing to work with you on this, but it has to be a fair development for everybody who sits around looking for housing. So, and that being said, we can no longer push the stormwater behind, and I'm glad to see it on the agenda tonight. That makes me a little bit more hopeful in moving forward. I rest the rest of my time, thank you.
Mary Beth Klein.
Good evening, council. You know, I sit here and I'm listening to the citizens, and I have to ask the question, when is enough enough? I have sat through meeting after meeting, when citizens of the Parkersville community have implored you, and are imploring you today, to not add more density to their neighborhood, because it will only increase the issues that they're already dealing with every day as a result of the projects that you already approved. This is a historical and culturally important neighborhood. Today, as a result of your decisions and your predecessors, Georgetown County has successfully gentrified the African-American community of the Lower Wacama Neck to less than three percent. And based upon your recent decisions, it seems like you are intent on driving that number to zero. Now, I wanna believe it's because we are looking at these projects individually, we're not looking at the cumulative effect that they have on the neighborhood and the surrounding communities. So let's look at what you've done for the Parkersville neighborhood. Aside from the rec center, which we all enjoy, you've given them a dump, a cell tower, numerous storage facilities, and multiple high-density luxury housing developments, which have increased traffic and Sunday day flooding. Here's just the recent list that you've added to this neighborhood. The Osprey and Regatta Townhomes, against the planning commission's recommendation, the Retreat at Stables, Parkside at Polley's, Hammock Cove. In total, you have improved, approved over two hundred incremental residences in this neighborhood, bringing over four hundred and fifty cars, all within one square mile. Now you have a project in front of you that's gonna bring ninety more and more than two hundred cars. So I ask you again, when is enough enough? Is it your intent to justify this community out of Polley's Island? You do have a choice, and I hope that's not your intent. It's time to explore your moral compass and listen to the pleas of the families that have been here for decades, if not centuries. I implore you, do the right thing, protect them, vote no. Thank you.
Blaine Draper.
I'm Blaine Draper, Sheriff Keepit Green. I'm here again tonight, once again, to stand up for the residents of Parkersville Community, who was just recently identified at the previous work session as an SPA on the water management plan. And I oppose- previous work session as an SPA on the water management plan. And I oppose the proposed 90-unit, three-bedroom townhouse development on the Mercom PD property in Pettigrew Drive. There are many reasons not to move forward with this significant increase in density in this traditional African-American community, but I'd like to focus on one glaring issue that is painfully obvious to all: insufficient infrastructure in this section of Pettigrew Drive. This section between MLK Boulevard and Waverly Road is a narrow, two-lane road that has already seen increased traffic based on previous development in the area. Local citizens frequently travel this roadway by foot and by bicycle without any sidewalks or bike paths. This subject was recently called out in an article in the October 13th issue of the Coastal Observer. Speaking to extensions of bike lanes along Waverly and Pettigrew, Councilman Goggins stated, quote, "Pettigrew's under design, but it's run into a lot of obstacles with respect to easements," unquote. His next statement is what stood out to me, quote, "It's very narrow," unquote. I agree with Councilman Goggins. It's very narrow. It's very narrow, and I also noted that with interest his other statement that there's increased awareness of the need for infrastructure. Well, let's not put the cart before the horse. Last month, this council approved two subdivision applications on Parkersville Road and Pettigrew Drive, which will add 200-plus vehicles to those roads. Now you're considering adding another 93-bedroom townhomes rental units to Pettigrew Drive with another 200-plus vehicles. This is beyond madness. Planning Commission members Hammy, Bundy, Graham, Davis, and Great denied this application by a vote of 5 to 0 with one extension. I would respectfully ask county council members Anderson, Johnson, Carolina, and Morant to respect the opinions and votes of their planning commission appointees and also deny this application. If Councilman Goggins and Newton would like to join in, all the back. Like the planning commission, the county council should demonstrate to the residents of Parkersville that you also have their backs.
Christine Keeler?
Good evening. My name is Christine Keeler, and I'm on the advisory council of Keep It Green Advocacy. I'm here tonight to state our position that any members on county council who serve on the board of the Economics Alliance must recuse themselves from participating or voting on the Mercom rezoning this evening. In response to a Freedom of Information Act request issued by KIGA, the county represented to in writing that the alliance is a completely separate and independent organization from the county. If that is the case, then there is no question under the State Ethics Act and advisory opinions from the State Ethics Commission and Alliance board members must recuse themselves. According to the Ethics Commission, the only exception to the rule would be that if the alliance is actually an arm of the county that, quote, "exists solely at the discretion of the council," end quote. The county assured us that the alliance is an independent entity from the county, and accordingly, it would be a conflict of interest for board members of that organization to vote on this issue from which the alliance stands to gain. Thank you.
Johnny Ford?
Good evening. And I'm Johnny Ford, local pastor in the Poli's Island community, as well as part of the Parksville Planning and Development Alliance. As has already been stated, planning commission voted unanimously to deny this zoning request. I'm so proud to have had my dad to stand in on my behalf during the last session. And I find it quite ironic, and I'm so glad to be part of following the giants such as Mr. Norman Reed, who stood up here earlier. It is citizens like Mr. Norman and so many who are here in our gallery who have lived in our Parksville community who just want council to have ears to hear. To have no problems coming to our churches during the election season. To shake our hands at different events. But I'm here to ask you to consider this rezoning because it's important to understand the neighborhood in which high-density development is being proposed. Our families have lived here for generations, as many families have tonight. Parksville is characterized by low-density, single-family homes along narrow, often unpaved roads. We see gentrification happening all over. High-density projects like these push current residents out of the community because they can no longer afford to stay. We have a valuable history and a heritage to protect and at risk of being lost forever. Our population is increasing, as was said, and alarming rate, and we concern, and we are concerned about the future of our community. I believe this point is important. In the past, our neighborhood has been recipient of less than desirable land use, as been pointed out. I live in one of those communities on Pettigrew Road from down from Recycle. Everyone shares that and come to our dump. I've made a, I remember talking about, why don't you put a dump in another neighborhood? And so we are not against development, but we believe development should, one, comply with the law, two, be consistent with the neighborhood and what the infrastructure can support, and three, meet the needs of the community. This develops none of above. My last point, this is a very important issue to the residents of Parksville. We would ask our council to adhere to the comprehensive plan and not allow Parksville to be changed in a way that enriches others at the expense of our existing community. Thank you for your time.
Cindy Person?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Person. I represent all the folks you heard from who live in Parkersville, as well as the citizens groups you've heard from. And honestly, I'm up here a lot, and I'm looking at proposals a lot, and this, I believe, is the most flawed, legally flawed proposal I have seen. And I don't even know where to begin. I'm sure you've all studied my letter really hard today, but I just want to go through it, point by point. First of all, the planning commission unanimously voted to deny this proposal. I believe under the State Planning Act, you have to follow their decision in this context. The second thing is, there are no vested rights. We're talking about a PD that has never been built. It doesn't exist. It expired a long time ago. You, while your planning commission, received a petition from 950 residents. A year and a half ago, we presented it to planning commission. Under your ordinances, it says it should be reverted. The planning commission ignored us. It says shell, by the way. That's mandatory. The application is defective. This parcel is owned by three landowners. This request is made by one. A PD is a unit, and all three should be part of the application. We believe that the comparisons to what was approved in 2015 are really irrelevant. Right now, this is a vacant parcel of land. It generates no traffic. It generates no stormwater issues. There's no public benefit to this rezoning. It does not comply with the comprehensive plan, and you have heard me say on more than one occasion that state law requires our zoning ordinances to follow the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Gina Brown?
Notes up. Can everybody hear me all right? Good evening, council members. Everyone here tonight. My name is Gina Brown. I'm the Director of Economic and Community Development for Silicon Ranch. We look forward to further discussing the commissioning plan, which all of you have seen. We look forward to this discussion, so we understand the deferral tonight. We appreciated the turnout at the county-hosted community meeting on October 10th. A special thank you to Pastor Chris at St. Delight's Church for opening his doors. The number one question we always get is, why this land? This specific property provides suitable access to utility infrastructure. The previous owner was a willing seller, but the benefits we see for the community are a value that alternative land uses and options likely can't tell. There will be a substantial tax increase to the tax base of the life of the project with little to no impact on county services. This project will create a handful of full-time positions, but we see the creation of local construction jobs as an opportunity for specialized training, workforce development, and other opportunities to grow a career. Silicon Ranch has a land management program, an initiative focused on deserving the land to its most natural state with responsibility to existing wildlife and vegetation. We're a quiet, odorless neighbor that will produce low-cost, clean energy that will help your utility providers diversify their energy portfolio and stabilize your rates. We're excited to be landowners in Georgetown County that are committed to investing in the county, specifically the Lambert Town community, beyond the property lines. Whether it's through education partnerships, workforce development, sponsorships of events that capture the spirit of the community, whereas we recently did a donation to the Black River United Way for hurricane relief, it's our mission, it's our duty, to provide an economically sound and safe project. Be a corporate neighbor you can count on and a landowner that stands by its words. Thank you for your time.
Amy Brandon?
Counsel, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. Got a lot of information given to you. It seems to really only be one-sided as far as what you've received in paper. You know, I think you got some stuff in your pocket today that was handed out to really show you a different side. You got a letter from Scalp, who's a South Carolina environmental law. There is record that they are not in agreement with building this solar place in Lambert Town. It shows that they are violating the Wetlands Act. We have a lot more information to present to you, but three minutes just doesn't do it. We've talked to you. We've called you. We repeatedly let you know. I think there's even been some chaos amongst, and I hate to say it, but maybe some of you have tried to deter our community, saying, well, if a solar panel, which is really a power plant, does it come, then there's going to be housing. Well, let's look at what the law requires you to do, and that is what is presented to you, and that is to rezone the area from low density, and you're wanting to do it high-density public, and then you want to allow a solar overlay. There's no need to talk about housing, none whatsoever. That is not the issue, and it cannot be determined by you, as council at this time. The application is not for that. If that comes, and again, we'll take a vote, and we'll let you know where we stand on that. But as of right now, everybody, please stand that is opposed to the solar farm in Lambert Town. This heavily outweighs any two people that would have got up and spoke, and the reason that they said that they were against it is they didn't want heavy housing in the area. We don't want our land rezoned. We think it's kind of a tactic that you kind of postponed this, because we've been coming to every meeting. We've been paying gas. You know, it's about, I think it probably costs us about $10 a person to get here with our gas to come down to meeting. We're not going to stop. You can push it off until new county council sits up there, because we know some of you are going to be going out, but this is our public hearing tonight, and we're going to go on record, because we won't get another chance to speak, and we understand that this is a tactic from the county. We will not be silenced, and we asked you to please vote no. Do not destroy our timberlands.
Final speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll move on down to our consent agenda. Five matters on the consent agenda were approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number 22-070. Procurement number 22-071. Procurement number 22-075. Procurement number 22-085. And procurement number 22-086. We move on down to our public hearings. We have, let me get started with the attorney one moment. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on down to our public hearings. As as you, CEO, have heard earlier, ordinance number 22-27 regarding the solar farm and ordinance number 22-28 have been deferred. So the public hearing regarding ordinance number 22-27 is being recommended to be deferred also. Do I get a motion to defer to ordinance number, the public hearing on ordinance number 22-27?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We defer, and I think we should do, take all this under consideration at one time. So that's my motion to defer.
Do we have a motion to defer ordinance number 22-27 to be taken up with the other issues regarding the solar farm? Is there a second? A second. Any discussion? It was, it was moved by Councilman Goggins and seconded by Councilman Morant to defer ordinance number 22-27. Is there a discussion, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. The public hearing regarding ordinance number 22-27 is being deferred to being combined with the second reading of the ordinances. We move down to public hearing regarding ordinance number 22-34, amendment to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget ordinance. Amendment to the fiscal year 2022/2023 budget ordinance. Please be seated, please. We please have the seats. We can continue with our meeting. Thank you. We move on down to public hearing regarding ordinance number 22-34. Amendment to the fiscal year 2022/2023 budget ordinance. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak regarding that particular ordinance? The floor is not open for comments. Stay in a one, the public hearing regarding ordinance number 22-34 is not closed. We'll move on down to third reading of ordinances, ordinance number 22-34. Amendment to the fiscal year 2022/2023 budget. Ms. Langston.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Counsel. This is third reading of ordinance 2234. It's commonly known as the rollover ordinance. It allows for projects and purchases that were budgeted in fiscal year '22 to be completed in fiscal year '23. The ordinance has changed since second reading in the general fund and road improvement fund, so we will need an amendment to the ordinance. The total rollovers from '22 to '23 were about $7.8 million. That is about $1.5 million more than the average for the last five years, but it's mostly because of the lag time in getting vehicles and equipment for the capital equipment replacement plan.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any question for Ms. Langston, from council?
Thank you for those numbers, Ms. Langston.
You're welcome. That was for you.
You've heard the report from Ms. Langston. Is there a motion for a third reading approval of ordinance number?
Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 2234, the amendment to the 2223 budget.
Thank you. You have a motion by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Since the text has been changed, is there a motion to amend the ordinance and incorporate the proposed changes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Newton. It's there, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. We first voted the amended motion. All in favor? Oppose? Now we, motion carries. We now move to the original motion. Any discussion regarding the original motion inclusive of all the changes? All in favor? Oppose? We'll now move down to ordinance number 22-36. An amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to reclassify a 12.66-acre parcel located on the west side of Pettigrew Drive across from its intersection with Commerce Drive, further identified as TMS number 04-0203-188-02-00, from commercial to high-density Miss?
There, Carolyn.
Mr. Chairman, and our council colleagues, items 11C and 11D on the agenda in reference to ordinances 2236 and 2237, and because of our current litigation between my company and the developer of record for this project, and so this procedure can be fair to Georgetown County and fair to the citizens who've expressed their concerns, I, at this time, will recuse myself from this action.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. As is typical when we have a future land use map proposed change and a zoning map proposed change, I will do 11C and 11D together. I just want to make one clarification. Item 11C, instead of referring to 12.66 acres, should refer to 14.45 acres. This involves a request from Mr. Stacy to amend the Paulies Island Business Commons Plan development to allow for mixed use of commercial and 90 multifamily units. This PD was originally approved by council in 2008. It was approved as a resort services plan development at that time. A technology company then purchased two of the parcels on the track and subsequently amended the PD to allow for a technology park and other associated uses. Council approved this amendment in October of 2015. The Alliance for Economic Development for Georgetown County then purchased parcel three of the track. The agent for that applicant is proposing to further amend the PD to allow for the mix of multifamily and commercial uses for parcel three. The Alliance is the owner of parcel three and the applicant here, as is required in section 1702.1 of our ordinance. You may remember that council reviewed a request for this parcel in November of 2020 to allow for mixed use of commercial and 182 multifamily units. Plan Commission recommended denial of that request, and it was withdrawn before a final vote of council. Ordinance 2015-41 is the current ordinance for this PD. The approved uses of that ordinance are listed in number three of your staff report. At the request of the owner at the time, this PD was granted a two-year extension in 2012. Subsequent extensions were given in 2014 and 2015. In 2016, it was determined an extension was not needed due to the major PD amendment that was approved in 2015 for the tech park, and construction took place on one of the existing buildings on parcel two in 2017, making the extensions no longer necessary. The proposed plan shows 90 townhome units with a gross density of 7.1 units per acre and a net density of 8.62 units per acre. The units are shown in groupings of four, five, and six, with a total of 16 buildings. All the units are proposed to have three bedrooms. The land use element of the comprehensive plan defines high-density development as anything from 5.1 units per acre to 16 units per acre. This does fall within the definition of high-density. The plan also shows the proposed commercial area of 1.79 acres. They are not proposing to change from the existing list of uses, and again, those are in number three of your staff report. The proposal complies with parking requirements. Each unit will contain a one-car garage and two parking spaces in front. There are an additional three guest spaces that are shown on the plan as well. They are proposing to maintain the setbacks and the landscape buffers from the original plan for the technology park. This portion of the track has 1.44 acres of wetlands, as well as an isolated freshwater pond that contains .78 acres. They are showing a small area of fill for a roadway crossing of the .77-acre wetland in the middle of the track. The wetlands have been delineated. That's included in your packet as well. These wetlands are non-jurisdictional. They likely will need approval from OCRM, and of course, county stormwater for land disturbance. A traffic impact analysis was prepared for this PD back in 2008, when the plan was for resort services. At that time, the plan showed a total of 2,835 new daily trips. That was based on 194,200 square feet of business park. When the request came through in November of 2020 for the 182 multifamily units, the applicant at that time updated the traffic study and provided a whole new traffic impact analysis. At that time, the study showed a total of 1,062 new trips per day for the commercial and residential. The applicant received permission to also utilize that study for this request, using those same trip generation estimates from that study for 90 units. The new plan would generate approximately 604 trips per day. We are making some guesses there, because we don't know exactly what the commercial uses will be. If a restaurant is included in that commercial, that number could increase to 997 trips per day. Again, that's an estimate based on the commercial development. Typically, a restaurant, it would be the highest generator of traffic. That is 1,451 trips less than the existing plan for the business park. The results of the study indicated that both Pettigrew Drive and Commerce Drive, and Pettigrew Drive and Waverly Road currently operate at an acceptable level of service and would continue to do so with the proposed development. And again, this is referring to the 182-unit plan from 2020. The county stormwater department issued a letter of coordination for the project based on the conceptual plan, stating that they received it and the requirements of the stormwater management ordinance will be met. Of course, no land disturbance will be allowed until a permit is issued. A tree survey was submitted for the original proposed development, and four trees over 30-inch DPH are shown to be saved on the site plan. A tree removal and replacement plan will need to be required, again, prior to land disturbance. Our future land use map currently shows this track as commercial, and it was amended to that when the 2008 plan was approved. Our definition for commercial in the comp plan does not allow for residential uses. A designation of either transitional or high-density residential would need to be made to support the proposed change. This plan does show a sidewalk along one side of the driveway throughout the development. They do have plans for a .39-acre amenity and a .92-acre dog park. There is also a 10-foot bike path easement along Pettigrew, which was also part of the original approval. The previous PD approval did have a condition that even though this tract is not in the Walkhamon Lake Commercial Corridor overlays on, the PD did have the requirement that it would meet the overlays on with the exceptions that are listed there. Those basically have to do with large buildings and the roof pitch for the building. We believe that, based on the reduced size of commercial for the project, that the overlay requirements could be reasonably applied to the reduced commercial amount with the new plan. The applicant has, as of tonight, indicated a willingness to offer up to 30% of the units at a below-market rate. The information that's in your packet now does refer to 20%, so that would need to be a change. This track is bordered by general residential zoning to the north, south, and west. GR is our district that allows for high-density. Staff does not believe that spot zoning is an issue in this case. The land use element provides some language as to what is required for high-density development. Those are provided in number 20 of your report. It does refer to available water sewer and stormwater systems, the proximity to a road system. It refers to public improvements, adjacent commercial and service facilities, off-street parking, sidewalks, bike paths, open areas for parks and recreational use, and it does refer to what we call usable open space. There is also a statement that says that these developments should protect low- and medium-density residential neighborhoods from commercial and high-density encroachment. Housing element is recently approved as an amendment to our comp plan. It does refer to the need for adequate and different housing types in our area and affordable housing opportunities in the county. The companion corridor study also referenced this area as a potential for mixed housing. Number 22 on your report references staff's suggested conditions if approval is granted for the proposed PD amendment. As was referred to tonight, the planning commission held a public hearing on this issue on September 15th. At that time, nine people spoke against the request, with many of the concerns you have also heard tonight. After much discussion, the commission voted five in favor and with one abstention to recommend denial for this request based on the fact that the proposal does not comply with the comprehensive plan. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have that I can.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions from council?
Yes, I have one. Mr. Stacy might be better suited to answer this. Of the 30%, due to the shortage of the housing we have in the whole county, not only the Walkhamon Lake area, how is the 30%, how was that, those people selected for those units?
Councilman Newton, that was just a request that we were given to try to increase the number of units that would be available for less than fair market value. And so we ran some numbers, and 30% was what we could come up with. There's not been established yet a criteria for how that would be selected. I think I mentioned in my opening remarks, we would certainly anticipate working with the administrator, the county attorney, and county planning director about a development agreement with the county that would be able to contractually govern that. We just aren't quite there yet. It's hard to spend the time to do that if we're not going to do the.
Yeah, I understand.
So if that's helpful at all.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
I do have one question. The PUD has been through a lot of changes over the years, but as far as staff is concerned in the county, it's still an active PD, correct?
Sir, the current zoning is plan development. Based on the 2015 approval.
Building permits have been laid on that PD?
Yes, those permits, two permits were issued for construction in 2017.
Okay. The Highway 17 companion corridor study studied all the commercial property up and down the corridor and related land uses and everything, and didn't it have some recommendations for this piece of ground?
It did have a section on this piece. I think, being aware that the alliance on the property at the time, they suggested this as a multifamily development with low-impact stormwater features, tree safe areas, and a development agreement to address the need for affordable housing.
And a question from Madam Administrator. I do believe that we're well underway with sidewalk design for Pettigrew, correct? Multimodal path, and that's hopefully not too many moons away from being implemented, correct?
Say that part again, please, that last part.
I'm sorry?
Say the last part of what you said.
We're not too many moons away, pardon the expression, from it being implemented?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
I have a, I've got a few comments. Mr. Goggins just stated that this is a plan development. I would disagree wholeheartedly with that statement, and I base that on the history that I've been hearing on this piece of property for some time now, that back when this thing was approved as a plan development commercial in 2008, I believe it was August, and I'm going from memory now, the developer had two years, based on our ordinance for plan developments, to construct whatever he was going to do. Along came the crash of 2007 and '08, and the gentleman never did anything. But according to the ordinance, he should have made an approach to the planning board to give him an extension. That didn't happen. So according to the ordinance, it should revert back to forest and agriculture. So based on that, all the history from that date on is flawed, because it was never converted back to forest and agriculture that way. It should have been done. So what I would like to do is, I would like to make a motion to table this ordinance and its fellow ordinance until we've had a time, have time to get, have the planning board or the planning department straighten this mess out, and then we can go from there. Shall I, may I rebut?
First, is that a motion, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a, we have a motion to throw from Councilman Anderson. First, you can do it in discussion. There's a motion by Councilman Anderson to table ordinance number 22-36 and ordinance number 22-37. number 22-37. Is there a second?
Remember, we're talking about the law here, and you have preached to me about following the law. The law was not followed back in 2010 when it should have been. So if you vote this way...
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor. We have your motion, Ms. Anderson.
Well, I'm just saying. Thank you.
Okay. Again, there's a motion on the floor from Councilman Anderson to table ordinance number 22-36 and ordinance number 22-37. Is there a second? Hearing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Councilman Goggins, I think you had another comment you...
I just wanted to say that Ms. Richardson may want to recite that history. I inquired about it some hours ago and respectfully disagree with the assertions of my colleague. For the record, you may want to go through that history briefly.
Original PD was approved in 2008. An extension...
Can you speak up there, Ms. Holly? I'm not, I'm not hearing what you're saying.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
The original PD was approved in 2008. It was given a two-year extension in April of 2012. At that time, the owner's request. At that time, the whole tract was in one owner, and in 2012 is the next time. We reviewed plan developments for extensions. The county office did several at that time in 2012, and this was one of them. They got a two-year extension in 2012. They got a one-year extension in 2014. A one-year extension in April of 2015. The PD was amended in October 2015 with a whole new plan for the technology park. That PD amendment was put in place in October of 2015. In April 2017, the commission determined that no extension was needed based on the most recent approval in October 2015 because it was such a change from the original PD. And then construction occurred on the site in January of 2017 and in March of 2017 by issuance of two building permits for an existing building on parcel two. So no extensions were needed subsequent to that point.
I'd like to say that the extension was granted in 2012.
Yes.
That was 24 months too late. So I reiterate, excuse me, if we're going to follow the law, we're going to follow the law.
Any additional questions for Ms. Richardson? Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Thank you. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-36?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do approve the application as submitted for several reasons. First of all, when I look at compatible land uses in the areas that are adjacent, there are warehouses and distribution sites across the site, resort, commercial nearby, and I remind the council that our original goal for this property was economic development when it became involved. We now have the opportunity to rid ourselves of some debt, put some money in our pocket. And this also meets the goals of our housing, part of our comprehensive plan. We've identified that we need affordable housing. Okay, fair good.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval of ordinance number 22-36. Is there a second?
A second.
It's moved by Councilman Goggins and second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Goggins, you can conclude your discussion regarding ordinance number 22-36.
Thank you. I'm very sorry I jumped the gun on some of the comments. I do empathize with those who live in this part of Paulies Island, Mr. Ford Reed Davis. And change is never difficult, but I do think, again, this meets some of our housing goals and objectives. 30% of this will be affordable, which is the first time that we've done a project in this county where the developer has come forward with that kind of a proposal. And I'm confident that when the development agreement is done, that it'll be something that'll be beneficial. We all know that we need housing that is affordable in the county. And once again, it removes the county from being a developer, which it's not well-suited to do, divests it of a piece of surplus land, and gets us back to doing the things we need to be doing. I mentioned the compatibility of adjacent land uses. A restaurant is going next door to this property. Again, there's retail across the street, so I think it's an acceptable land use.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes. So we've moved from forest and agriculture to commercial to now high-density in one fell swoop. And I'll remind you, the last developer that wanted to put housing on this, on this development did want to put some affordable housing on it, but it was too little, too late at that point in time. And I'm just throwing these facts out here to rebut what's being said. And, you know, you've done what you're going to do, and the law is the law, but we are not following it. Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion? We have a motion on the floor for approval of ordinance number 22-36. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose?
No.
Will the record reflect the Councilman Anderson? We move on down to ordinance number 22-37. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-37?
Mr. Chairman, I make a...
Yeah, Ms. Richardson did it both collectively. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-37?
Yes, sir. I would like to move that we table ordinance 22-37.
There's a motion from Councilman Anderson to table ordinance number 22-37. Is there a second?
A second.
Hearing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Now, is there another motion regarding ordinance number 22-37?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve ordinance number 22-37.
The motion by Councilman Newton for approval of ordinance number 22-37. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to first reading of ordinances. First reading be read into the record by title only.
Yes, ma'am.
We move on down to ordinance number, first reading of ordinances, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 22-39, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of a valid and taxes agreement by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Sherpa Six Incorporated to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. We dance to approval of our minutes from our October 11, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion regarding those particular minutes?
So moved.
Moved for, motion by Counselor Johnson for approval of the minutes. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. I'm sorry, it's Carolina. I'm glad you gave me that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Any further business to come before council? Saying that, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? You now stand adjourned.